Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Master Sergeant Charlie Phillips is chaplain with the Oklahoma City Police Department. He's here today to deliver the invocation. I asked Sergeant Phillips if he would keep in mind civic leader Aubrey McClendon, who passed away since our last council meeting, and he said he intends to mention that. Also afterwards, we'll have a pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the pledge. But would everyone please stand up at this time?
Will you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you have given us and for the opportunity to gather here today to conduct the business of this city. I would just ask for a special blessing for our mayor, city officials in this assembled council. Also, Father, I would just ask for an extra measure of your mercy, your grace, and the promised comfort to all of the individuals, the family members, that have been affected by the recent passing of Aubrey McClendon. We are thankful for the man that he was and his generosity and his vision, and for all of the things he has done to help this city become a better place. Father, I would ask that you would graciously grant the men and women gathered here today the wisdom to lead in the midst of conflicting interests and issues, confidence in knowing what is right and good, and the ability to work together in harmony. We thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon our community and ask for continued opportunities to serve and to make this city an even better home for all of our citizens. As always, Father, I would ask that you grant us personal peace in our lives, joy in our tasks, and as we continue to serve you, I ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher in the metro area as our Teacher of the Month, and this morning, we are happy to have Betty Lou Stover, who's from Mustang High School. Betty Lou, you want to join me up here? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Betty Lou Stover has been named Teacher of the Month for March 2016 by the Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Betty Lou received double recognition in the 2014-15 school year as both the Mustang Public Schools District Teacher of the Year and the Prairie View Elementary Teacher of the Year. Betty Lou is currently in her 26th year of teaching, 18 of which have been at various Mustang school sites. Betty Lou received her bachelor's degree in education from Cameron University and has served as a teacher in 5th grade classrooms, 3rd grade, Title I Math, 2nd grade, and she now serves as a physical education teacher. Betty Lou is a dedicated teacher with a unique understanding of struggling students and who believes all children can learn. Betty Lou has been named a Site Teacher of the Year twice before. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Betty Lou Stover on her selection as March 2016 Teacher of the Month by the Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. Betty Lou, and I'm hoping the round of applause can persuade the city council to vote for this. Can we have a motion? And a second? Cast your votes. How about that? It's unanimous. Congratulations. And I know as a physical education teacher, you know, we talk a lot here about physical education of our kids, and we're worried about childhood obesity. Do you have any individual thoughts on that? And feel free to thank anyone you'd like for the honor you're getting this morning.
Yes, childhood obesity is a big issue in the country right now, and that is something that we're taking very seriously at Mustang, and I know across Oklahoma. Another thing that is coming up with PE is something called the new PE, that physical activity promotes brain growth, and children learn much better after they've been physically active before they learn a new topic. So, something we're going... Thank you. I just want to thank the city council for taking time to letting me come up here and be recognized. I appreciate the time for the tour that we got to take and the things that we saw, and I want to thank my two superintendents that are here that have been here to represent me at each step of the way as I've been recognized for this year. Thank you so much.
Let's show our appreciation. Congratulations, Betty Lou. That Mustang School District, part of the city, is one of the fastest-growing parts in our community. I asked her about enrollment going up. She nods her head. I said, "Is traffic picking up out there?" She nodded her head and got a big smile on her face. I know Larry and I have worked a lot on trying to figure out in the next bond issue how we're going to address the infrastructure concerns out there because it is an amazingly vibrant part of the city's growth. We're on item 3B of the council agenda. That would be an appointment of Dr. Gary Raskov to the City County Board of Health. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 4 is a Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the journal from March 1, and for B is to approve the journal for February 23. Is there a motion? All right. Any comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, we have a number this morning, sorry, on page 14, under item 9B1. Item A, 1117 North Billion Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item I, 30 Southwest 40th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item J, 3101 North May, we ask that that be deferred until March 22. Next, on item 9C1. Item G, 1701 North Kellum, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 14. Item N, 219 North Tuttle Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item S, 2264 Northeast 16th Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item U, 2319 Southwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AE, 1804 Northeast 53rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AJ, 329 Southeast 69th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AK, 1159 Northwest 91st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 16, under item 9D1. Item F, 1701 North Kellum, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 219 North Tuttle, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item T, 2264 Northeast 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V, 2319 Southwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AH, 1804 Northeast 53rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item AL, 1159 Northwest 91st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Did you mention 11A?
I did not mention 11A. That's the aggressive panhandling ordinance that's on, and Councilman Pettis has asked that that be deferred due to his absence.
All right. All right, we're on to item 6. It's revocable permits. The first is a request from Beck's Automotive to host the 4200 Northwestern Block Party. This event would take place on April 3, and it looks like Carrie Hewlett is here. Hi, Carrie. Tell us about this event.
This is the 14th year we've had this event at the same location, between Beck's and BZB's. We close the street and have a car show, head shaving to raise money for pediatric cancer. We've raised over $1.1 million in our 14 years. It's just a real fun... There's food trucks and kids' activities and just a fun event.
Sounds like it. How many years you been doing this?
This will be our 14th.
Yeah, well, congratulations on your success. Edison, Ward 2.
Move for approval.
Okay? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie, and good luck. All right, item 6B is a revocable right-of-way use permit from Goodwill Industries of Central Oklahoma. They have an event on June 5 called Peace, Love, and Goodwill Festival, and Linda Burgett is here. Good morning.
Good morning. Our event, this is the third year that we've held the Peace, Love, and Goodwill Festival. It's a showcase of the best of Oklahoma in music, merchants, food trucks, and children's activities. In fact, it's becoming quickly the place for parents and families to bring their children because it's completely kid-friendly, including a princess event, so if you have a princess at home. We're looking to close Hudson so that we can accommodate our growing crowds. Last year, we had 10,000 people, and our food trucks ran out of food in two hours, so we need to really shore that up and bring a lot of food in to support our crowds.
All right, and it's between Reno and Sheridan on Hudson for a couple of blocks there on June 5.
That's one block.
One block. Well, I appreciate your work on this. It's in Ward 6, Meg.
I really want to compliment Goodwill Industries. If you'll notice the date, it's June 5. Talk about preparing in advance. This may be the earliest request for a revocable permit I've seen, so I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6C is a request from Prodigal LLC to hold the O-City St. Patrick's Day Parade, and Billy Walton is here.
Good morning, everyone. This Saturday, March 12, we would like to host the St. Patrick's Day Parade. It'll be the same route as we did last year. This will be our third year to produce this event. It's a great event for the city, and it's a lot of fun for everybody. It's a family-friendly event that everybody can go out and celebrate St. Patrick's Day together.
We really appreciate you taking this on. It has been great fun to have it downtown.
Yes, definitely.
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you all for your time. Have a great day.
Item 6D is a permit to hold the Glow Run at Stars and Stripes Park, and this would involve portions of Lake Hefner. Is anyone here representing this specific event? All right, well, it entails Words 1, 2, and 8. Is there a motion to pursue this? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll assess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Four items here. All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions about the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Two items. All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, and we convene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual considerations? Larry?
G is in George.
And Mayor, I had 7E and 7J.
Okay. All right, Larry, you want to get started with G?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Item G is the asking for approval for these specifications to go out for bid. The bid's to be received on March 29 for the last portion of the 23rd Street streetscape. This portion will take it from North Tulsa down to I-44, and when it's done, we'll complete the streetscape that was envisioned back about 10 years ago, which will make the area from the Bethany Line to I-44 a much more improved ambiance for the neighborhoods. Thank you, Your Honor.
That Windsor neighborhood has come a long way.
Yes, it has. Citizens in Words 2 and 6 and 3 have all chipped in their efforts and their ideas, and so it's going to be a real fine thing when it's all done. Thank you, Your Honor.
Larry, we actually had at least one item on the agenda last week of an economic, you know, redevelopment of a commercial building on 23rd Street as a direct result, I think, of the street improvements that are being made. So, we really are beginning to see a difference over there.
That's great. Meg, you wanted to speak on item E and J?
Yes, if I could, Mayor. Item E, I just wanted to mention, is part of our Strong Neighborhoods Initiative. This is a partnership with the Home Investment Partnership and the Housing Redevelopment Corporation to develop low and moderate income housing in the Class and Tenpen and Class and Highlands Park neighborhood, and I just wanted to mention the great work that SNI continues to do. There was a really good article in the paper about the STEM, after-school STEM program that they're working on, and they're doing excellent work in three of our communities. And item J, I just saw Doug Cooper come in, our Parks Director, is to approve a contract award to win construction for three of our parks in Ward 6 in particular. This is Red Andrews Park, great neighborhood park in an area, you know, right in the middle of the Cottage District. It's undergoing such dramatic transformation, and the neighbors have really stepped up. We've had great participation from lots of the neighbors, bringing architectural ideas and other kinds of plans, additional funds for the project, and so I think we'll see Red Andrews Park really develop into a very significant neighborhood park in a public-private partnership.
Any other comments on the consent docket? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Let's move on to the concurrence docket. Is there a motion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on anything involving the concurrence docket? Looks like a lot with the Water Trust and Maps for Kids.
I guess I should mention just a couple of very nice gifts to John Rex Elementary School, Oklahoma City Community Foundation. There's some playground equipment, and the PTA also contributing to work on the John Rex playground, so, you know, again, representative of the public-private partnerships that we have going on all around the city.
All right, ready to vote the concurrence? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9 begins a series of items that require a separate vote, and we'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 8. It's an ABC issue at 5900 West Memorial Road. Mark?
Yes, this is an ordinance on final hearing for an ABC1 alcoholic beverage ordinance. I think the applicant's here, I just saw him raise his hand. I've had the pleasure of dining at his facility, and it's a small, family-owned business, and there are no objections from the planning commission, so I would move for its approval.
All right. Was that a motion and a second?
Yes, please.
When I was turning my head? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 9820 Paisley Road. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become a new R1 single-family residential district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this? Is Bob Teener here? Bob, would you just give the... This is kind of a cleanup operation here to make sure that all of this is zoned R1 from a conglomeration of zoning. Would you just make a few comments for the council?
That's correct. This is part of the old Westbury Golf Course, and they've worked hard to get this thing where the neighbors are comfortable, and it's basically going to be... This part's going to be single-family. There's some little higher density to the west. It's in conformance with the plan, and I think the neighbors have all agreed.
The different parts of this land were zoned a long time ago in a different zoning. That's why this gets it all to R1, to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. So with that said, I move for approval.
Is there anyone that showed up to speak on this issue today? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 4917 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently C3 community commercial and R1 single-family, and it would be all put into a new pod if approved. Ed?
So, you know, this part of the city has been... There's been a lot of conflict, including in front of the council. A few... 50th and Western has Bishop McGinnis on the northeast corner, and then on the other side is the empty lot where we debated whether Chesapeake could do kind of the industrial-sized gas station, and that ended up not getting done. We've had conflict where Chesapeake wanted to buy a house and demolish it for parking. We debated that in front of council. So this is a... On the southwest side, between 48th and 49th, along Western, a street that we've put 4 to 5 million in as part of our bond. We made a large investment along that corridor, and so we've struggled with parking. We've had a lot of entities thinking about buying houses, demolishing them for parking. So we've had conflict over the last... Certainly over the last year, but more than that. There's a dry cleaner... Boy, do you have the... There's a dry cleaner on 49th, and so they outgrew their space, and they needed parking, and they needed more office space. So they demolished a house and kind of paved it and started using that for employee parking, and then took another house and made that into office space. And that raised great consternation from the neighborhoods. Basically, why are you citing us? Why are you doing code enforcement throughout the neighborhoods, but you're not citing... Yeah, go to... Not that, but go to the next one. So this was a house that was demolished, and I'll go back to... This is a house that was demolished, and then it was converted into this parking lot. And then this was a house that was converted into office space as part of the dry cleaning business. So that... Those things... So finally, the city started citing those... So we started issuing citations. And once we started issuing citations, we got this proposal for a PUD to do this development. Once we got the PUD application, then the citations stopped, and so we've had kind of a period of calm. The one, which I'll be interested to hear today, the feeling among the neighborhoods, planning commissioner, traffic commissioner, my concern is, is this actually going to get built? Or is this an application to solve a parking problem and stop citations from the city and just kind of hold it in limbo indefinitely? That's really the crux of the neighborhoods' concern, my concern, planning commissioner's concern, traffic commissioner's concern. There's been... I know that Janice Powers is working on some amendments. I think there was a feeling that this was going to get heard next week instead of this week, so I apologize for the last minute, but I haven't seen all those amendments. I got a message from Bob Teener that maybe there's going to be some amendments put forward today. Can you show that one picture? And then a final question that people were asking last night is, I guess there's a gate, a capital investment in a gate with a RV that's now being parked there behind this gate, and people are asking, why make the capital investment in a gate if that's going to be part of this development? With that, I'm happy to hear David Box, 522 Callacore Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This PUD process has been one that for my client's been about 12 years in the making. This is a vision that he has had for some time, and here in the last year, he's hired myself. He has an architect, and he has a civil engineer. And what we did at the outset was, we went and met with all the different neighborhood groups. As this council is aware, the neighborhoods surrounding this area, you have Douglas Edgmere, you have Helms Farms, you have Crown Heights. All of those neighborhoods have a high propensity of protesting zoning cases. I think it is significant that every single one of those neighborhoods, not only isn't protesting, but they've taken the time to write support letters for this PUD. So what we have is a true mixed-use development on Western between 49th and 48th. The architects took great time to ensure that the design of the buildings are time-sensitive. They look as if they were developed and built at the same time that Crown Heights was built, all the other commercial up and down Western. So what we intend to do is to come back in with a series of buildings, all of which will be mixed-use. You'll have, on the first floor on Western, some light commercial, retail, restaurants, with a top floor of residential. Likewise, the four buildings proposed behind what we're calling Buildings 1 and 2 will be a mixed-use of residential and light office. We toned down some of the uses after meeting with the neighbors on those back two, but we were encouraged with the amount of support that we had from all the neighborhood groups. West of Western has seen its share of, I think, struggle, and the neighbors felt that this was going to be a good thing to spur some improvements in some of the housing, spur further retail and restaurant uses like you see further south on Western. I will have my client address the timing aspect of it, but we had made multiple changes to the PUD immediately after planning commission and had submitted those to Ward 2 Planning Commissioner Janice Powers, and she got back with us yesterday. So we dropped everything and went and met with JJ Chambliss and made a few minor changes to the PUD, all of which staff now has. They dealt with just concreting certain requirements on height of our fence. The PUD said no less than a six, no greater than eight foot. She wanted an eight foot, so we just took out the option of the six to confirm that it would be an eight-foot fence. The ingress egress is from 49th in and then out of the development on 48th. She wanted some different language, so we did agree with the language she proposed, but it didn't change anything within the PUD. So the changes that were made were all minor in nature. It was just tightening up the language that Ms. Powers wanted, which we were happy to do so. I will have my client, Mr. Turrentine, address the questions you had, Councilman. How many houses are being demolished as part of the development? I believe there will be three houses demolished, and we're coming back with 19 residential units, so it's going to be an increase in the total number of residential units there on Western. And on the issue raised on traffic commission, when we start this process, we also involve Mr. Rob Littlefield, who's Ward 2 Traffic Commissioner, to get his comments. So part of the design you see with the ingress and egress is a direct result of what Mr. Littlefield had wanted, and you'll see this angled nose-in parking that we are proposing on Western. We have matched the design that the city is doing up and down Western, so it'll be consistent. It'll be a consistent design, consistent layout, as you're seeing up and down Western. That has been a great success for those businesses, and we anticipate we'll be successful for this development. But with that, I'll let Monty answer the question raised by Dr. Stidham.
Good morning. Monty Turrentine, 4917 Northwestern. Which question would you like for me to...
Well, so one question I know that Janice had was, she wanted to... There's a question of moving the chemical, the industrial part of the dry cleaning to a different location, which would be required to do this development. And so I guess the timing of... I mean, when we met, I don't know, nine months or however many months ago here, we basically said, "Well, let's address this when you're ready to move forward and start building." So what is the timeline for construction?
I would like to put the timeline at about 24 months, but, you know, I just can't 100% say that we'll have all that done in that time. A little bit of history, I bought that building in July of '01, and soon after that, there were several commercial real estate brokers and owners here in town that came to me and said, "Monty, you've done really good with that purchase, but at some point in time, you were probably going to need to move that facility because that property will be valuable and will have great retail... It will be a great retail asset." So even as far back as 2001, I've had a PUD in mind for this location. In 2007, I bought a building up at 8209 Northwestern, which is one of my possible relocation... Possible places where I could relocate the plant. Relocation of the plant's very expensive, but, you know, years ago, before the parking was an issue, after Chesapeake bought Abraham's, wonderful onion burger place across the street from me, Dan Ladon with the agreement from Aubrey McClendon to let me park at that site. And so... And so for many years, we parked at a vacant lot across the street. Through these, through those years, our business grew quite extensively. There was never any plan at that time for Chesapeake to do anything different. And then their plans changed and the CNG plant was developed and I was in a crunch. So that's why that house was bought and I really had no other choice at that time.
You see, so this council has had, you know, great drawings presented to it of what was going to happen on 50th and Western, and the neighborhoods were involved, and then it just never got built. I mean, a lot of architects and, so what would be your response to the concern that this arose at the time that you no longer were able to use the agreement with Chesapeake for parking? So that then, that's when we started to see this development?
I do disagree with that. In 2005, I started buying adjacent properties. This is way before any parking issue, way before I parked at the CNG site. This has always been my plan. Public records will show I paid significant amount for houses that are adjacent to my property for this master plan.
So what would be the timeline then? I mean, what, the first step, I guess, would be to move the plant to an off-site location. So what, is there a, and I know that Janice, the planning commissioner, spent a great deal of time trying to work out that timeline. So when would that occur?
Again, I'd like to say, I'd like to see it happen in 24 months, but I can't guarantee any of that. I don't think that, from my understanding, is that something that is involved in a PUD that you have to have a limit or a time limit to that, to that process? And to answer your question on the capital improvement, my wife and I are the ones that envisioned all this over these years, and we have a vacant house on that corner. And there's not a, there's not a permanent RV behind there. We used it simply for over a weekend to do some work for it. We have an empty rental and Governor Fallon's new daughter-in-law actually lived there for five years and she has moved out with her recent marriage. And so we are having to do capital improvements to the home so that we can rent it. And that's what, I'm not going to let that house just sit there and dilapidate.
I think the concern is why, why put money into a nice gate there and then park an RV behind it if that's, if there's some imminent development that's going to occur there?
Well, let me address that. You know, when we, when we look at these zoning cases, there's never a guarantee or a commitment that developments can happen immediately. All we can do is analyze any case, whether it be straight zoning, PUD, and SPUD, on the merits of that case. That's what our professional planning staff does. And if you look at their staff report, they overwhelmingly were supportive for this development. My client has always indicated to me that this is planned, to develop this. I don't see why he would go to the expense of hiring lawyers and architects and civil engineers if it wasn't to develop. So I believe that the intent is to develop the site, but if we look at what it's zoned right now, it's zoned straight C3. What this PUD does is significantly dial down the intensity of use that could be done on that site. My client has agreed to wipe out any pole signs. He's agreed to wipe out any monument signs. The only signage that would be permitted after, if this PUD was approved, would be attached wall signs. So you're going from something that is straight C3 and heavy intense, and we've seen up and down Western what problems that can create, something far less dense, far less impactful on Western. So I do believe that he will develop this site, but we have to analyze this based on the merits of the case before us, not based on commitments on timeframe. I don't think that is an appropriate means to analyze a zoning case.
David, did I misunderstand, but when I read the memo, it looked like Commissioner Powers seconded the motion to approve?
Yes.
And it approved unanimously?
Mr. Bright made the motion to approve and Ms. Powers did second it, and it was a unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Another comment I'd make is, I drive by the cleaners a lot, and I remember before he owned the property and in comparison with owning it today, and he has done a tremendous job with landscaping and beautification of that site.
No, except for the dumpsters that the neighborhoods have complained about, but I agree, I mean, that's, that's fine. But I want the council to know that there is great anxiety. Meg, that's, I promise you that I had two late-night, exploitive-laden conversations with those who are not, no matter how they may have voted. That was contingent on there being some change in the, in the language between then and now, which has not taken place. Some of it has, some of it is not, specifically as to the, one amendment that she proposed was that you change, or change, change it so it's, limit the permitted use of laundry service to drop-off and pick-up only.
Sure. And so, again, I, you know, I, all I can do is operate in the timeframe that I'm given. We submitted our revised PUD on February 15th. I didn't get any comment back till late yesterday. I dropped everything I had to go meet with staff and Ms. Powers, made all the changes she suggested. I then got another message at about midnight or 1:00 in the morning after I'd gone to sleep with the question you just raised. I've asked my client, I think he's fine with that. I do need to confirm with legal staff that if we do add that language, that the plant use would be considered legally non-conforming. He can't be in a position where a PUD gets approved and all of a sudden the plant that is key to his entire operation somehow becomes illegal. As you might imagine, moving a plant of this size is going to take some time, whether he can go lease a currently operating plant or move the facility to another building that he owns. Though I don't know that it's a problem conceptually, I just, it was 1:00 in the morning and haven't had the time to meet, but I don't think that, that that's a problem. The other issue she had was the dumpster enclosure. 100% agree with the language she wants. That'll take me three seconds back in my office to modify that.
I'm going to move for a one-month deferral, and this is the reason, is that there's, we do all these at the last minute, but there's, you know, Janice tried to send me some, some things. I couldn't get the email open during three different programs. I have questions for Kenny about this that I need to explore. The support of the neighborhood that was cited was contingent on this happening right now, not, we pass this, we demolish houses for parking lots, and then a couple of years from now, we might move forward. I mean, what was said here publicly is not going to do anything to decrease the anxiety of the planning commissioner, traffic commissioner, myself, or the neighborhoods. And so I'm asking the council for a four-week deferral so that I can explore with the municipal councillor, a couple of issues I want to ask him, and that we can make sure that all the amendments that are being bounced back and forth are incorporated into the language ahead of time, not back in your office after we vote.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second on the deferral? All right, the motion dies then with lack of a second. Is there a motion on the item?
Do you entertain a motion to continue it for two weeks?
Sure.
You be comfortable with that?
I think so. I would like the opportunity to sit down and visit with you. We've attempted to do that and we're fine with two weeks, but, you know, the day of the hearing with the money spent and professionals to get ready to come today, I think has been unfair to my client. But I think all the issues that remain can be addressed frankly, real briefly or administratively. So we would certainly request a vote today, but if it's the will of the council and there's not five votes, then two weeks would.
I'll make a motion to defer it two weeks.
All right. Any comments or questions on the request for a deferral? Cast your votes. And the item is deferred two weeks. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 3603 Southwest 12th Street. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial and it would become a new spud if approved. Meg?
Yeah, Bob, maybe I could get a little help. As I understood this application, there is residential already in place. And so this is an attempt to bring the property into conformity, into compliance with the existing zoning?
That's correct. There, it was, this tract and a tract to the west was zone I-2, but it was never converted and there's been residential developed there. And to get it into compliance, it needs to be rezoned.
All righty. And does this add an additional building or it's just changing the zoning?
This is just to make these comply.
All righty. I move approval.
All right. Is there a second on item 9A4? Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes on 9A4. Passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 1,000 Northwest 24th Street. It's currently NC Neighborhood Conservation and Urban Design Overlay at 23rd Street, Up-Down Corridor District, and it would all be put into a new spud if approved. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak? I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on 9A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1427 Southeast 19th Street. It's I-1 light industrial and R-1 single family and it would be put into a new spud. Meg, did John visit with you about this?
Yes, John, he did. And did anybody sign up, Francis, to speak about this? There were no protests at the planning commission and John's request was if there were no protests here, that we move approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 9A6. It passed unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 2, 2700 Northwest 39th Street. It's currently C3 community commercial and it would become a new spud. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak? I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 9A7. It passed unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 4,008 Northwest 23rd Street. It's currently R-1 single family and it would be put into a new spud. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present? Y'all deferred this from last week because the applicant was not present. If you would, give us your name and address and then give the council an idea of what you want to do under these rezoning.
Good morning, Council. My name is Fernando Espinoza Jr. My, you mean my home residence address or the address of this property?
What's my address?
My home residence, 3213th, northwest 110th Place, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. On this property, we've owned this property for, I believe, almost 10 years, so we're planning to change it from a residence, from a rental property into a office, into insurance office. We've, the area that we've looked at is, it's already a commercial area. There's several properties on the right side and the left side, and we were seeking your approval for this. I believe there was a approval that needed to be made on the landscaping, which we are very willing to do then, and we're seeking your approval today for that.
What type of parking will be available to the?
We've measured the space, the parking space has 55 feet by 55, which accommodates for far parking, five parking spots, one of them being handicapped, and there's plenty of space for a vehicle to be able to pull out and pull into Northwest 23rd Street. Only one entrance from 23rd Street. I believe that's what I was told I would need to do.
And the parking will be paved?
Yes, it will be paved. It's going to be concrete. So it won't be asphalt, it'll be concrete. Should be plenty of room and safer for the vehicles to come in and out.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? So you move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 9A8.
Thank you.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A9 is also in Ward 3 at 3338 Southwest 36th Street. It's R-1 single family and it would be put into a new spud. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Did anybody sign up to speak on this? Is the applicant present? If you would just give us a brief overview of what the purpose is of the request?
I've lived in that neighborhood all my life and it's a, it's been a business since I've lived there. I do siding and windows and I'm going to use it for office and a like shop. And I plan on refurbishing the storefront. It needs a roof. It's kind of run down. I'm going to try to restore it back to as much original as it was, so.
Nobody signed up who's unanimously approved by the planning commission? Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A9. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck. All right. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9B?
Yes.
Yes, come on up. We'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm Yvonne York. I live in Mesa Park, 818 Northwest 17th Street. And our business, as Ms. Yur knows, is on Northwest 4th. And before I get into what we're calling a dilapidated building, I would like to thank the council and any of you who had anything to do with getting the inlets on 4th Street to eliminate our flooding. Thank you, Meg. And I think Dr. Shadid was there to help with that, so we want to thank you. Another thing, I have three wonderful grandchildren that graduated from Mustang High, one of whom is now studying for his masters and was on the President's Honor Roll. So I can say thank you, Mustang, also. But our building, if you'd like to look quickly at these pictures.
Which property is it on our list here?
May I give you?
Yeah, but what's the address of it?
3101 North May Avenue.
It's on unsecured.
It was our family business for.
Hold on just a sec. Okay, so first, we're going to devote on dilapidated.
Oh, it's on the next item.
Yeah. All right, so you don't need to sit down, just stay right there. I don't think this will take long.
I apologize.
Yeah. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed on the dilapidated list? Okay, sir, you'll need to switch places with him.
I'm.
So we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Tim Hillman and I presently reside at 115 West Lillak Court in Midwest City.
Okay. And which property are you here to speak about?
The 2649 Southwest 39th, yeah, 39th.
Okay.
Okay. This is also listed under two other headings. Can you take them all at one time or do you need to do them one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay.
Yeah. And so this is the property and it's in Ward 6?
Yes.
And it, I mean, I can see why our staff believes it's dilapidated. What's your input here?
Okay. When my father passed away a few years ago, he left me with six old places, all but two of them in that part of town that were in bad shape. And I've been working since then, getting the better ones in shape where they would sell, getting what we needed to keep out of them like that. This is the last one because it's the worst one. And we haven't done anything in a while over there on that one. I would just say that if we can take steps on these three issues, we could have this dilapidated barn or garage or whatever you want to call it, out of there this weekend.
All right. Let's see what Meg wants to do.
When you say you'll have it out of there, you're going to take it down?
Down, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I'd like to leave it on the list. I'd like to go ahead and leave it on the list, but Charles will work with you. If you don't have his information, he'll get your card before you leave. And as long as you're making progress and as long as you're willing to take it down, we'll work with you.
Yeah. We won't start doing anything immediately, so if you're going to do it this weekend, you won't have any trouble.
No, that's kind of.
But just kind of let Charles know your progress so he knows that it's, that you're working on it.
Yes, sir.
If you'll stay in touch with him, you shouldn't have to come back down here.
Okay.
We're concerned about safety and.
Absolutely.
All those sorts of things. So that's really our main issue and as long as we know you're moving toward.
As you can see, it's an ice hole.
It's a mess.
Yes.
Thank you for taking it down.
Thanks for your due diligence on this.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else here want to speak on an item under the dilapidated structure list on 9B? All right. Let's cast your votes then on that list. It passed unanimously. All right. Now we're on 9C, and I think this is where you come in. This is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. And remind me again the address of the property?
3101 North May Avenue. Was our family business for 32 years.
I'm still looking down the list here.
It's Jay.
And isn't this one, I think this one was deferred.
Francis believes we deferred this.
It has been deferred, but I just wanted you to know that we have, and I think one of the gentlemen here had passed by and saw it, and I think Mr. Shadid is going to look at it today, are you not? Okay. We don't want just to board that building up. It has been a family-owned business. We're trying to get it back where we can let someone. business, we're trying to get it back where we can let someone move back in it, but as fast as we put the windows in, they're knocked out. We've had two air conditioners, all the copper and all the plumbing stripped, and we've been just out there fighting like the wind to get it done. We have new businesses all down May Avenue, we have our new Sams, our new Lowe's from years back, the new Onq, and ours was a very prosperous business for thirty-two years. We want to keep it that way, therefore, we are boarding the building up, uh, to work inside, because it's pretty useless to do anything with the windows right now, it's quite evident. Uh, but we're not just going to board them with just old brown board, we're, we're painting both sides, they're, they're beautiful, and Dr. Shadid can look, and they're trimmed in red, just as our, um, building is. We paid fifteen thousand dollars to get a new roof on the thing, so we're certainly not going to abandon it, or it isn't dilapidated. May I show you?
Sure.
This is the, the residential needs to look, but we're going to see, there's two hundred windows there, by the way. Each window will cost about twenty-five dollars to get replaced, that's five thousand dollars, so we're going to work up until such time that we have to, you know, in there to, to occupy that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, I, I think, uh, it's been removed from the list today, but I think in general you just need to stay in touch with Charles as-
Yes.
-as you go through this process, so it doesn't appear back on our list again, and, um, you know, perhaps, uh, showing it today will entice someone to want to go in there and start a business, and, uh, and can, can, can take this cue.
Well, we have a lot of people that want it, we can just get it where they can-
You just need to improve the property, but you intend to do so.
Well, we need to get it back the way it was when we left.
Okay.
But thank you so much again.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming down today and letting us know what your status was. Alright, uh, is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed on the secured structures list, which is nine C? Okay.
Tim Hillman, once again.
Well, um-
The unsecured, we're on a different item now, right?
Right, but this is the same property you had before?
Yes, yes.
I think we dealt with it.
Yeah, I think we dealt with it, because we're going to leave it on the list, we're not going to take it-
Okay, oh, three issues, okay.
Yeah.
Three issues are all the same, as long as it's taken down, you're fine.
Sorry, didn't make that more clear, you don't, you don't need to stay.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Alright, is there a motion then on nine C, uh, on the unsecured structures?
Second.
Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item nine D is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under nine D?
Mayor.
Uh-huh.
On item I, three one oh one North May, that says we need to defer that also to March, uh, twenty-fifth.
Okay, that would be the same property that she was in speaking about, so it's on two lists. Okay, is there a motion then to defer, is that what you want to do? Defer item nine D I, uh, how long?
Two weeks.
Uh, yes, is that, we did the first one two weeks, so this had to-
Okay.
Seven weeks.
Is there a second? Alright, cast your votes on the deferral of item nine D I, it passes unanimously. Alright, now is there a motion on the rest of the, uh, abandoned buildings list?
Who's that?
Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item nine E is a public hearing regarding removal of property from the abandoned building list. Is there anybody here hoping to speak on either of these properties? Okay, how about a motion then to move it forward?
Second.
Alright, cast your votes on nine E, it passes unanimously. Item nine F is claims recommended for denial, there's one item listed here, did someone show up to speak on this item? Alright, how about a motion then to deny the claim on item nine F? Is there a motion?
Who's that?
Alright, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item ten is claims recommended for approval, is anyone here to speak on either of those items? Alright, how about a motion on item ten?
Who's that?
Cast your votes, item ten, pass unanimously. Item eleven is items from council, Mark, you have anything for us today?
Yeah, I'd just briefly like to bring up Aubrey McLendon. Um, the first time I met Aubrey was in high school, he was about two years younger than me, he was a close friend of my brother's. Um, I've heard a lot of great stories this week that have made me happy and made me feel good about all the givings and all the wonderful things that Aubrey McLendon did, but I'd like to share one story real brief. Um, when my boys were young, I would take them to work with me on Saturday to teach them some work ethic and teach them about what I did, and one Saturday after we'd finished working with my oldest son and I, we were driving down to Western by Chesapeake, and all of a sudden my son Matt goes, "Wow, look at that." And I looked out there, and there's Aubrey on his bicycle, pedaling as fast as he can with a big bag of mail, just going down the road. And, um, Matt said, "What's he doing, Dad?" And I said, "He's working, he's working on Saturday." He was a hard worker, he was a hard charger, he was a giving person, and this city will sorely miss him for years and years to come, and, uh, my thoughts and prayers go out to his family today.
Thanks, Mark. David, any comments on items from council?
No, thank you.
Alright, Pete? Larry? Ed? James? Okay. City manager reports.
Maureen Heffron is here this morning to give us an update on the, uh, activities over at the Myriad Garden, it's always great to have Maureen come and share with us her vision and activities.
Good morning. Yes, I hope you enjoy the presentation, it's, it's just to give you an update of what we've been up to the last year or so, and some things we'd like to get done this year, um, and to show you what a success the gardens have been since they redesigned all the new things and activities and visitors that we, that we get. Well, this was a really good year for us, we, uh, won a couple of terrific awards, which we'll get, I'll get to later, but this presentation, I just want to give you kind of a quick year in the life of the, the Myriad Gardens, some of the activities that we do, we do a lot, uh, people can't come to everything, so maybe there's things that we do you don't know about, and we'd just like to, uh, share with you that. So we started out the year with a wonderful Martin Luther King celebration we've done every year now, we get, we're getting bigger crowds, it's, it's really fun. Uh, this was something we did with the Heart Association to help raise awareness for them, it was a little Valentine's Day fun activity, but we're trying to reach out and do things like this with folks in the community where they can take advantage of our site and do creative things that makes the gardens more active, it raises awareness, they're a nonprofit group, so this was a lot of fun working with the Heart Association. Uh, we have a orchid show right now happening in the Crystal Bridge, and, uh, this has doubled our attendance from last year in February, so we're trying to do more things in the Crystal Bridge to get people in there and see what a treasure it is for the city, and our orchid display is really, really beautiful. Um, orchids are exquisite and interesting, our curator Nate Shane is just brilliant, and his, uh, theme this year is survival of the trickiest, how orchids, orchids have adapted these incredible strategies for survival. Um, and you, if you go, you can see and, and read all about these really interesting things, so all ages enjoy it, kids and schools are enjoying it, it's, it's really a beautiful show. And I hope you've noticed our spring bulbs are coming up, um, at the gardens. We really want to make the spring bulb display a, uh, a wow event for the city, so that it really becomes something everyone looks forward to. So we got a grant last year, a two hundred thousand dollar matching grant, so if we can raise two hundred thousand, this foundation will give us the full amount, and that will go into a permanent endowment. So one of our longer-term goals is to really build that up, so this time of year, moving into April, we, it, it's something that people would want to come and see from.
Maureen, it is a giant wow today, it's just unbelievable, a corner of Sheridan and, uh, Robinson is just spectacular.
Well, if, if, what I, I mean, and that's great, I'd like the whole grounds to look like that, so maybe three or four or five years from now, we'll have that effect all over, which would be really, really incredible, really exciting. So that's a, uh, photo from last year. Uh, the great lawn continues to be the living room of the city, as we call it, lots of, uh, all kinds of gatherings here. The foundation invested in replacing all the trees around it, we put in a zelkova tree, which should, uh, withstand the heat and, um, drought conditions and all the wear and tear a little better than the other tree that was originally planted, so that was a big investment, which, um, should really work well for the lawn. Uh, we'll be starting to plant more and more colorful flowers here in the next few weeks. Um, our Minders Terrace, which we just put in a couple of years ago, is so popular for weddings and events, it's, it's a great gathering spot for, um, people in the gardens. So we're always adding more and more color into the gardens, you'll see on the west edge of the lake this year, um, many, many more plantings along the slopes, and really fill that in. This is a project I'll tell you just spend a minute on, because I think it's really exciting, it, and it really shows off what a, an ornamental American prairie can look like, so you not only have the benefits of a beautiful garden, but this, this serves as a pollinator garden, and there's a big, big bush in the country, and all the botanical gardens are getting behind it to raise awareness for the need for people to put in pollinator gardens, whether it's a large scale or just a little patch in your background, monarchs are really endangered, and even in urban areas, you can actually create these little butterfly corridors to help all of those types of, um, pollinators survive. So we've put in this Oklahoma prairie last spring, this is the overview of where it's sited, uh, near Reno, and we just, uh, there was sort of some patchy unattractive plantings there, so we just took it all out, we worked with a really top designer, because it takes a lot of money to look natural, and look, uh, not too unkept, but, but somewhat natural also, and people have just really responded to it, they really like it, it takes a little education, so people know that just because it looks a little more natural, um, it doesn't mean it's unkept or weedy, it really is doing a lot of good for the environment. And this is just after planting, it's all native plants, a lot of them are native to this region of the country, and there it's growing, and there's another shot. And we have lots of wildflowers in it, we'll be putting more in, so it really is such a nice icon when people come to Oklahoma, this is a prairie, it really gives a sense of place, and we had lots of monarchs last year, so if you come in late August, it's just, looks like it's alive, all these butterflies are around it in the fall, it's absolutely beautiful and striking. So that is our new American Prairie Garden, and we're having a symposium on that same topic this Saturday, which is almost sold out, over two hundred people, um, in the Devon Auditorium, our annual gardening school. Uh, we'll be putting on our Easter egg hunt, we're trying to do a lot of programs for families that celebrate certain seasons, um, this year we expect to have about nine hundred kids, it's really grown in popularity, so we've added a few new, uh, hunt times for, for people to come down and enjoy. Uh, we do spring festivals for kids, we try to have some fun creative activities like this, uh, we do a spring festival that brings a book to life, last year we had Charlotte's Web, uh, super popular, this year it will be The Jungle Book. We even had Wilbur there. We've started a Father's Day Five K as a way to add more wellness activity downtown, it's a, it's another fundraiser for us, we hope to grow that every year. Our full moon bike rides continue to be really popular, they're growing, we've added a, a run to that, every month, we do yoga, we've started Tai Chi for seniors, uh, we've even started to use our lake as paddle boarding, working with the Boathouse District, so we'd like to do some more of that. This was really fun, this was super popular last year, we started dancing in the gardens, we have dance instructors come in, and then we have a big open community dance, and it's, it's just great. So we're expanding that, and, um, this was a salsa night, so it was really popular, and we want to reach out to our, uh, Hispanic neighbors who live nearby, so we're having more Hispanic-themed, uh, Dancing in the Gardens program, uh, starting May fifth, on Cinco de Mayo, we'll be doing that, so if you should come down, it's a lot of fun. We do dinners in the garden at night, these help raise money, it, it's just another fun thing to do, but we have a dinner series in the garden we started. Our twilight concerts on Sundays are always popular with the Arts Council, we do art, uh, music programs in the Minders Terrace, uh, we do a lot of rentals, that's one of our sources of income, lots of weddings, uh, Shakespeare will be coming back, of course our movie nights, um, it's, it's one of those things where it's, it's just, uh, we need the new MAPS three-part lawn, because our lawn is getting a little small for all the, the folks who come out to this every year. Uh, lots of dog programs, we did a spooky pooch parade this year, we did dog Easter egg hunt, uh, dog training, it's, everybody wants dog programs, so we're trying to offer them. International Mud Day, we have an International Mud Day Festival, which was really popular with families last year, we're going to expand that, and just all the features that kids love, water features. Our porch has become a reading center, we got a gift from one of our donors to outfit it with new tables and chairs, and we have hundreds of books, you can come in the summer and read on the porch, and we have storytelling, and it's really terrific, a lot of people now, uh, go there almost every day and, and read books. Lots of education programs, we've got a terrific education staff, we have, uh, two and a half people in that department, and they do lots of programming for all ages. Pumpkinville continues to be really popular, uh, we have thousands of people join because of our events and festivals. This is Fall Color, and then we go into our winter season, the Ice House, we had a really good skating season this year, we had about thirty, thirty-one thousand total skaters, which was great, because we had a couple weekends where it was just a weather loss, so the ice rink is really building, um, kind of a tradition for people to do that, our holiday season, um, Crystal Bridge, our shops, uh, Carousel is popular, so that's just a little quick, um, tour around the year of some of the things that we do. This year, a couple of big projects we want to get done is fix our two terraces, our east and west terraces at the lake, um, they're eroding, and the, the original grass planted there isn't probably the best choice, so, uh, we're raising some money and hopefully getting some grants, and we'll redo those, and then the whole lake area, I think, will look really spectacular. And just the last few slides, we've served, in, in this fiscal year, from July first, um, through the end of January, we've served about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand people in our programs. That doesn't include, um, just the casual visitor, people coming to other events that other people put on at the gardens, that's just what we've, we've done, in terms of our programs. Um, we did win the, um, last year the, the top award for excellence as a nonprofit in the state, which was terrific, and then it was really exciting to, to win the, um, Open Space Award from the Urban Land Institute back in October, it was wonderful for the gardens, of course, but it really was terrific for the city to, to have such a prestigious honor given to it, so that was a, a real, um, high point of the year. And I'll just end with, to show you, uh, a budget, um, our budget's comparison since the foundation took over the gardens back in two thousand eleven, twelve, the city's share, um, at that time was funding seventy-six percent of the total operating budget, and in the budget that we just, that we'll be presenting to you this year, the city's share has dropped down to just forty-six percent, so the, uh, foundation will be covering the rest of that. And I'm happy to say that, um, in all of those years, we've met our budget, we've met our fundraising goals, and we've exceeded them, uh, to somewhat, and a lot of that surplus has, has been plowed back into the gardens to help with some repairs and changes and enhancements, so, so, so far, so good. The, the current funding situation is a little more challenging, but, uh, I think we, we will make our numbers, but I think it's, it's just to say that the public-private, um, foundation partnership is, is working well, and it's, it's on track. Can I answer any questions?
Very impressive, Maureen, uh, anyone else have any comments or?
Very, very impressive, I enjoyed that.
Maureen, I walked by Saturday night on my way to Red Tie, left the museum and walked over to Red Tie, and it was, in the gardens, the weather obviously was incredibly cooperative, but there were tons of families out using the space at seven-thirty at night, which, you know, is really, um, sort of icing on the cake for all of the regular programming that you do, it's just a joy to see, and the tulips, I, I can't get over it, from, from Saturday to today-
I know.
...how they've exploded, it's just, I almost stopped in the middle of the street.
Okay, thank you.
Pete? Uh, just a little reflection, I was here in the eighties when, uh, this was just a dream of, of Ms. Lattick, of Mayor Lattick, who, uh, left and- left in 82, 83, I guess. And by 1988, there was a vote on the council, whether to continue Mira Gardens or not, that passed 5-4. And it's interesting, if you look back at it, who the people were on the 5 side and who the people were on the 4 side. You would, it'd surprise you to see who that was. And I think this is just a testimony to 4 side and perseverance, and you guys do a great job. You know, you've responded to public comments. The bums were too high when it was built. Those are down now. It's just a great example of positive civic. I saw Jim Talbert there. He was one of the, one of the people that were, 35 years ago, were laying his life on the line virtually to continue to support it, and I know he continues to do that. It's just, it'd be interesting, somebody do a little history on what happened. Some of the people, I think, that were on the 4 side of that vote would be embarrassed today, as I may be for some of the times I'm on the short side, I saw a couple of votes I've taken recently. But history will tell us how it all works out. But it's a great project. It's a great asset to Oklahoma City. Question?
Yeah, it was, the funding for it was in part, was in six to fix, and it failed. And I could see the council at that point, if the citizens aren't going to fund it, having to come up with general fund dollars in that economic time period, that must have been difficult.
The 87 elections and the split was very interesting. It reflects what the council was thinking in the 87 election, but it's a good, it's a great, it's a great thing for Oklahoma.
We're very proud of it, Maureen, and I know you've played an integral part of it, so please thank your board for us and let us know how we can be a further help down the line.
Okay, thanks for your...
All right, thank you. All right, anything else in the city manager reports?
No, sir.
Okay. Citizens to be heard, Joe Sarge Nelson.
Joe Sarge Nelson. On a bright note, I want to commend the mayor for being the longest city mayor in Oklahoma City. They acknowledged us last Tuesday, and I congratulate you for that. And it's a well-deserved position. You work very hard.
Thank you.
Now, back to the dark side of my version, and I'm sure the council sitting behind me as well as the one up front, I'm still very unsettled on the convention center project. I've read this law repeatedly, over and over and over, and nowhere does it say that if you operate and work for this city, elected, appointed, or in any position whatsoever, can you enter any contract in any manner whatsoever, make a profit any way whatsoever, therefore you violated the city law or the charter. And in my opinion, that has been done. I had it explained to me by two of his top counselors, both well-respected, and I respect both, but that law doesn't say anywhere in there that you can go to another party to make a profit off the city you represent. And that's exactly the way I see it, without naming the party or getting involved again. I did ask, and I'm going to ask officially, if I have to, I'll do it legally, that the party stepped down out of respect. They did violate the city code. They made a profit off the city taxpayers. That ain't going to fly. And I do know that a little over a year ago, the statement was made that we change the laws almost daily to meet our needs. I made that statement to one of the counselors as to who made that statement. I'm not throwing mud or anything, it just, it just was made. Well, that law hasn't been changed, and if that law hadn't been changed, and until it is, that law's been violated, both of them, Section 2, 8, and Section 4 and 11. Therefore, making money and selling something to an entity that you represent on this city, on the city government, is illegal and it's wrong, and taking the taxpayers' money, as far as I'm concerned, is a fraudulent misconception of your position that you hold. It should never have been done. And I suggest to you that the person gives the money back and start from scratch or step down. End of story, and I will not stop until this is renovated one way or the other. Thank you very much.
And that's going to do it. Words adjourned.